Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. Regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. I would like to recognize a couple of folks in the audience before we get started. Former Commissioner Anna Sadler is here with us this morning. Welcome. We also have former Mayor Bob Mower with us this morning. Welcome, sir. And a board member from Kill Devil Hills, Terry Gray. Welcome, sir. Good to have you with us. If you will please join me in a few moments of silence. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a huge agenda today with lots of special events planned, and we are grateful that you're with us and ask you to bear with us as we work through all of this. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So move in a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and the first is our annual introduction of lifeguards. And Chad, if you will please come up.
Morning, everybody. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here once again, introduce our staff virtually. They're out working out right now, finishing up their workout. But yeah, it's my 20th year in this position, and it's always great to have the support from the town of Nags Head for our program. And I believe we're going to play a video here to introduce our staff, and then I'll say a couple of things afterwards. Good morning. Chad Moats, Captain, Nags Head Ocean Rescue. This is my 24th season with Nags Head, and I live here in Nags Head. We're looking forward to a great summer here at the beach. Live like a local and respect the ocean.
Hi, my name's Luke Ayman. I'm from Highland, Michigan, and this is my third year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
My name's Hannah Austin. I'm from Nova Scotia, Canada, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
My name is Sophie Binkeski. I'm from Manio, North Carolina, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
My name is Matthew Bergeron. I'm from Quebec, Canada, and this is my first year as a lifeguard for Nags Head Rescue.
Hi, my name's Megan. This is my fourth year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Manio, North Carolina.
My name's Vanessa. I'm from Quebec, Canada, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Kendall. This is my rookie year, and I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina.
Hi, this is Mary Ann. This is my rookie year, and I'm from Quebec.
Hello, my name is Gunner Cow. This is my second year lifeguarding. I'm from Greenville, North Carolina.
Hi, my name is Lawrence. I'm from Montreal, and this is my third year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Aaron Davis. I'm from Baltimore, Maryland. This is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Antoine Cowan. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is my third year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Michael Do. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my fifth year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hello, my name is Michael Federline. I'm from Baltimore, Maryland. This is my fourth year in Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Jennifer. I'm from Montreal, and it's my second year.
Hi, my name is Scott. I'm from Montreal as well, and it will be my first year as a supervisor at Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Coleman Flynn. I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina. I've been working for the town of Nags Head since 2017.
Hi, my name is Fred Gangden. I'm from Quebec, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, my name is William Garment. I'm from Nags Head, North Carolina, and this is my fifth year at Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, I'm Nicholas. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my sixth summer for Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Beatrice Jean-Galavois, and I'm from Quebec, Canada, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, my name is Ryer Gilbertson. This is my third year with Nags Head, and I'm from Arizona.
Hi, my name is Rosalie Gilbo. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is going to be my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Jacob Gilbo. This is going to be my fourth year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Montreal, Canada.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Hankey. I'm from Grandee, North Carolina, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hello, my name is Dunia. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and it's my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, I'm Jack Clump. I'm from the Florida Keys, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey, I'm Luke Lapage. I'm from Kehawke, and this is my second year in Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
My name is Mason Lins. I'm from Nags Head, North Carolina, and this is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Laurence Lester. I'm from Quebec City. This is my second year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue, and you should see the other guy.
Hi, my name is Hillary Lewis. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia, and this will be my first year lifeguarding.
My name is Jacob Ramy. I'm from Newport, New Jersey, Virginia. This will be my 13th year lifeguarding.
My name's Adam Shantz. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Guillaume Raymond. I'm from Gatineau in Quebec, Canada, and this is my first summer with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Hey there, I'm Andy with Nags Head Ocean Rescue, I'm a lifeguard supervisor here. This is my ninth season with Nags Head, and I grew up in Virginia Beach.
Hey, I'm Jacob Smith, lifeguard supervisor with Nags Head Ocean Rescue. This is my fourth year down here at the beach. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia.
Hi, my name is Ellie Turgen. I'm from Quebec, Canada, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
I'm Patrick Trask, from Houston, Texas. This is my third year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
My name is Brianna Wilson. I'm from the Outer Banks, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
I'm Noah Van Dam. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nags Head Ocean Rescue.
Live like a local.
Love the beach, respect the ocean.
Again, yeah, I'm pleased to introduce our staff. We just got done a whole month of May supervisor training, and then our lifeguard academy. It ran for two weeks. We've been on the beach for about two weeks now. We had a great start to the season, and I think we're going to have a great summer. And I appreciate the support of the town and the community. Shout out to Benny Baldwin for putting the video together again for us this year. Did a great job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for 20 years of service doing this, Chad. We really appreciate that. That's fantastic. And what a great community of lifeguards, what a bunch of great kids from all over the place. It's really, it's really pretty fun. Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to a new employee, Nancy.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Kevin Goudy. Kevin graduated from Manio High School and was a police officer in Manio for four years. He is currently working toward his bachelor's degree in counseling from Liberty University, and he enjoys fishing, hiking, and four-wheeling in his spare time. He and his wife Jamie are looking forward to the arrival of their baby girl this November. I'd like to welcome Kevin Goudy.
Thank you, Nancy. That brings us to another new employee in planning and development, and Kelly will make the introduction.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to introduce our newest team member in the planning department, Greg Daisy. Greg joined the planning department on May 8th as Planner One, bringing with him a wealth of knowledge and experience. He graduated from East Carolina University with a degree in urban and regional planning. Before joining the town, he worked with the Division of Coastal Management, CAMA, as everybody calls it, as the transportation project field rep, where he processed CAMA applications for NC DOT projects, so bridges, roads, things like that. He also worked with the town of Kill Devil Hills, doing some stormwater management and maintenance for them. And he served as an environmental consultant with Environmental Professionals, where he was assisting the town of Nags Head with our water quality program way back when. So now, staff does that sampling, but many years ago, we had a contract to have that done, and Greg was doing that. He moved to Dare County in 2001, and he's been a homeowner in Nags Head since 2013. His family includes his wife Anne and their son Louis, who is eight and is finishing up second grade. And they have two dogs, Nina and Bates. Outside of work, Greg enjoys surfing, fishing, home improvement projects, working around the yard. His family is very active and enjoys outdoor activities such as walking and hiking around the neighborhood, Jockeys Ridge, and Nags Head Woods. Please join me in welcoming Greg Daisy to our team. We're thrilled to have him, so thank you.
Fantastic. We look forward to all that great experience. That's awesome. The next is a very special occasion. That is a recognition for 20 years of service. Kelly, you come back.
Thank you again. Today, I have the great honor of recognizing a wonderful member of our team for her 20 years of dedicated service to the town, Lily Nieberding, who is our permit coordinator. Lily began her journey with the town on April 19th, 2004, as an administrative assistant within the Public Works Department. In 2005, she transitioned to the planning department, where she's played a vital role in the smooth operation and success of the department ever since. Throughout her time here, Lily's been key to the success of numerous projects, including leading the implementation of all of our new permitting software, which is currently Munis, streamlining our permit processing system, and coordinating our records retention and digitization efforts. Lily's an unsung hero of the planning department. Her work is predominantly behind the scenes, but she's essential to our operation and keeping us doing the great work that we do. One example that I'd like to give you is I update you guys with a quarterly report and my director's report, and we talk about the number of permits we've received, what type of permits, and then the permit turnaround. And those permits get processed so quickly because Lily usually has the first look at them. She's making sure they're complete, they're accurate, all the documentation that we need is in there, so it helps our planners turn those permits around much quickly because Lily's got it on the front end. So nobody really knows that about Lily. On a daily basis, Lily receives and processes development applications, ensures departmental databases are up to date, generates reports for both their internal use as well as for Dare County, assists customers with the permitting process, monitors, answers questions about permit status and procedures, coordinates with other departments, such as Public Works and our fire department when we're issuing commercial permits primarily. And a lot of times, Lily's the person who's going to address those minor issues or concerns that come up along the way directly with the applicant themselves. Lily approaches every task with enthusiasm and professionalism. What some may not know about Lily is that she was born in Chile and moved to the U.S. when she was seven. She became a U.S. citizen at the age of 22, and as such, is fluent in Spanish and is called upon by other departments often to help translate when needed, which makes her an invaluable asset to the town along with many other reasons. In her personal time, Lily loves spending time with her two dogs, Dixon and Harley, and her two cats, Rocket and Luna. Her love for her pets reflects her caring and compassionate nature, which she brings to work with her every day. Lily's coworkers have some wonderful things to say about her, so I wanted to share a little bit of that. Lily stays in a constant state of cheerfulness and optimism, creating a wonderful work environment. She's knowledgeable and helpful with challenging and detailed tasks, and she's a pleasure to work with. Lily is always patient and willing to help customers and coworkers. She takes the needed time to explain and work with individuals. She's enthusiastic about helping people, understanding the codes and the permitting process. She always brings a unique perspective to meetings. Lily is always willing to help others, and stepped up in a major way when Kelly Brady, a previous planner, left the town, helping to ensure a successful sand relocation season, and she did so with a positive attitude. Lily knows all the ins and outs of Munis and is a great resource to have. She is a team player and an asset to the department. So with that, thank you, Lily, for everything that you've done and continue to do. We're fortunate to have you as part of our planning team.
It's our custom to take a photograph with employees with 20 or more years of service, so I'm going to ask Lily to stay up and ask the board to come around. We are grateful for those years of service and that smiling face we always see when we walk in, when we walk in the office up there. So thank you, Lily. That brings us to a presentation, a unique presentation this morning, and Amy Miller, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I hope I can do this justice because this is a big deal. So please join the town in congratulating Linda Bitner as the recipient of the North Carolina Outstanding Tax Collector of 2024. That's the entire state of North Carolina. And just so you know, she hates attention. So I'll try to make it brief. This prestigious accomplishment was awarded by the North Carolina Tax Collectors Association. Linda was selected on the basis of individual leadership, as evidenced by outstanding performance of duties and responsibilities of office. Municipal tax collectors are becoming more rare since a lot of towns outsource them to the counties. And so that is why, one of the reasons I'm really proud to highlight Linda's accomplishments. And I look back, the award started in 1982, I think. I think the last time that a town tax collector got it was in 2013. And since 1982, there's been about three or four town tax collectors. So I think this is a big deal. And I really do feel like having our own tax collector is really fiscally responsible from a cost perspective, but it also allows us to maintain control of our tax collection rates and holding ourselves accountable to our taxpayers in equitable collections. Linda's effort and diligence allows us to budget for almost 100% tax collection rate each year, which I think 99.75, just to give her a little buffer. Obviously, that provides a great value to our taxpayers. True to our town values, our people matter, and Linda is truly a community steward. And I know we've been through some of this before, but I will go through some of... The past 10 years, Linda's lowest tax collection rate, which she probably will kill me for saying this, is 99.9%, and that was during COVID. And it's actually funny because somebody called me the other day, and they wanted to know if they had paid their taxes or not. And I wanted to say, well, if you didn't, you would know. I didn't say that, though. But, you know, one year she collected 100%. I think she didn't collect $196 out of almost 7 million. This year, and I know other years, she's collected every single real estate tax that has a known owner. And I know some of those small ones that don't have an owner are really eating her up. She tries to find them. But, you know, I mean, 10 years, it's 99.99%, 99.99%. I mean, it's just incredible. And, you know, not only do we have high tax collection rates, but Linda, it's a one-man show. She does the tax collections, she does the billing, she prints the bills, she takes the phone calls. It is one person doing all this work. And on top of that, she helps with water billing. You know, the complexity of our tax structure has definitely evolved over the years, even since I've been here. We have six municipal districts. She reconciles, you know, the general ledger to the individual tax person. So she does a lot. She does the beach driving permit program, she does business licenses. I mean, it's just incredible that one person can do all that on top of, you know, maintaining this high tax collection rate. So again, I'll try to not go on and on, but I think it seems pretty obvious to us that Linda really deserved this award. It's a big deal. I'm really proud of her. Linda's success is the town's success, and we are glad that the state agrees with us as well. So kudos, Linda. Congratulations.
Right here. Yes. So this is really a momentous occasion. We have always appreciated your work. It's really nice to see the state appreciate your work. This is to certify that Linda Bitner of the town of Nags Head has been designated by this association as the Outstanding Tax Collector of 2024. As I said to her, we've always appreciated her work, but it's really nice to see the state and see that level of recognition. That's just outstanding. That brings us to two annual awards, the presentation of the 2024 Town Lightkeeper Award and the Nags Header Award. The Nags Head Lightkeeper Award was developed to honor persons who have shaped the image and direction of Nags Head, making significant contributions to the town through their time, actions, talents, and dedication. Nominees are to be outstanding individuals who have been involved in community service, such as boards, commissions, task forces, agencies, volunteer organizations, or community groups, and shall have demonstrated a sustained commitment to our community. They are to be perceived by the citizens of Nags Head as leaders who may have been active in local, county, or state government. Nominees may have served to influence decision-making on issues and may demonstrate through their civic involvement how the quality of life in their community has been enhanced. They may also have been engaged in the arts or commerce in such a way that they have elevated the profile of Nags Head. Or they may have been involved in the development of events which celebrate the town. This year's nominee is all of these things and more. Their service on this board and leadership of the town is noteworthy, and many citizens still look to them for leadership. Long since out of office, they continue to serve our community in myriad ways, with enhancement of the community always on their mind, expressed in their phone calls, correspondence, appearances, and across various forms of media. And their service to the visual, literary, and performing arts is virtually equal to their service to the town. Dedicated to environmental protection, her nominee played a central role in creating the town's Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative, chairing the town's first Septic Health Initiative Task Force. In 2005, he was inducted into the Steve Steinbeck On-Site Waste Water Protection Hall of Fame, which recognizes a select group of individuals who have, upon their own initiative, performed above and beyond normal expectations. Bob Mower graduated from the West Town School in West Town, Pennsylvania, with a bachelor's degree in political economics from Williams College in 1973. He and his wife moved to Nags Head in 1977 and are longtime residents of Nags Head Cove. As we all know, he was a longtime postmaster, and as some will remember, a part-time DJ. Prior to becoming a Nags Head Commissioner and later the town's mayor from 2001 to 2005, Bob served on our planning board and board of adjustment, and he has served or continues to serve numerous community organizations over the last 37 or so years, including the Dawn and Catherine Bryan Cultural Series, the Outer Banks Community Foundation, the Outer Banks Community Development Corporation, the Nature Conservancy at Nags Head Woods, the Friends of Jockeys Ridge, the Duke University Nonprofit Management Program, the Policy Committees for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and the Nags Head Firemen's Relief Fund Board. The Nags Head 2024 Lightkeeper is the Honorable Bob Mower, who is here with his wife to accept the award. Congratulations, sir. We're going to come around and make the presentation to you. I'm glad you're both here. We have a lot of things to hand you. This comes with a keychain. It comes with a lapel pin. And it comes, of course, with the lantern. Bob, please say a few words.
Oh. This is the, this was a commemorative lapel pin from the 25th anniversary of Nags Head. It was a big dinner at Carolina that King Avery set up. Thinking back to that, through the 25 years, it's been so much that I've been involved in, very little that I have actually done. I served with 20 board members. All the committees I've served on had other people. And it's really been a community effort. I'm so proud of the town. And this, I just, I know, I know the people who have received this in the past, and to be standing beside them on that wall at the town hall is an enormous honor. An enormous honor. I can't thank you enough.
Thank you for all of it. Oh, yes, please. To catch Bob Mower even momentarily with speechless is quite a reward. It's over already. The next item on our agenda is the Nags Header Award. The Nags Header Award recognizes a special individual, since deceased, who contributed over a period of years to the development of the town. Nominations may include former residents of the town as well as non-resident business owners who have helped shape the image and direction of the town of Nags Head. Louis Daniels Dahl Gray was such a person. Ms. Gray died on August 6th, 2023, at the age of 94. A true local banker with deep roots, she was born Louis Daniels in Wanchees. She was the great-granddaughter of Peter Gallup, the longest-serving lightkeeper of the Body Island Lighthouse. Ms. Dahl was one-time owner-operator of a crab house near the Manio Bridge, and later the owner of Snowbird Drive-In, which is still in operation today. the owner of Snowbird Drive-In, which is still in operation today. She was very active in her community, serving for seventeen years as Nags Head Postmaster. For time on her watch, just about every newborn in Nags Head was weighed on the scales at the Nags Head Post Office. She continued to serve her community, being elected to the Nags Head Board of Commissioners from 1989 to 1997, and serving a stint as Mayor Pro Tem. In 2007, Ms. Dahl received the Nags Head Lightkeeper Award. Ms. Dahl was a founding member of the Arch Church, where she faithfully attended until her illness no longer allowed. The nomination for this form, uh, for this award repeatedly cites her profound knowledge of all things Nags Head, her willingness to share her knowledge about seafood, postal operations, Nags Head history, and many other topics, and her ever-present smile and pleasant disposition. As a Nags Head Commissioner, I understand that Dahl Gray was, from time to time, a stabilizing voice of reason. When board actions might have taken a precipitous turn, it was Ms. Dahl who favored patience and a wait-and-see attitude. As a mayor, I would have appreciated that. As I suspect her sons, her boys, might also attest, she was an old-school fiscal conservative. Her first two years on the board, she voted against the budget, not for a specified reason, just nay. My suspicion is that whatever good she thought government might do, it was hard to vote to spend that much money. But it is thanks to Commissioner Dahl Gray that Nags Head has fireworks on the Fourth of July. One year during her first term, the July meeting fell after July 4th. Ms. Dahl said that she had really enjoyed the Manio fireworks, and that Nags Head should have a show. The board fell in behind her and $20,000 was allocated. The following July, Police Chief Charlie Cameron hired Boom Boom Zambelli, and the rest is history. This year, the Nags Head Award, which recognizes deceased individuals who have shaped the culture of Nags Head since its incorporation in 1961, honors Louis Daniels Dahl Gray. Her boys, Wally, Terry, and Gary, are here to accept the award on behalf of their mother. Next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide public comment, uh, to the board regarding matters of interest or concern. Please note that this is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to comments, but anybody who wishes to comment on something of interest or concern should do so at this time. Please note that if you're here to provide comment regarding, uh, one of the public hearings, either for the budget or the two text amendments that we have on the agenda today, you can reserve your comments until that time. But for anyone else who wishes to comment at this time, please start by going to the podium, telling us who you are and where you live, and then addressing your remarks to the, to the board, and I will let you know when your time is just about up.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Carolista Ann Cabblebaum, um, and I am one of Carolista Baum's three children who ran home the summer of 1973 to report to her that there was a bulldozer at the back of the dune. Carolista then went back to the ridge that day, confronted the bulldozer operator, and demanded that it be shut down. When the bulldozer operator left, Mom removed the distributor cap, and with that began the movement to save Jockeys Ridge from development. The entire effort almost fifty years ago was to preserve and protect Jockeys Ridge for everyone to enjoy. As Jockeys Ridge State Park turns fifty years old next summer, we hope to commemorate this incredible fiftieth jubilee in planning a four-day event from June 5th through June 8th. We are joyfully planning multiple events, including exciting educational programs, entertainment, legacy events, and we are hoping to bring a spectacular event to the Outer Banks that will be a memory-maker for sure. We are inviting local school groups, government organizations, and the private sector, all to be a part of and involved with the planning and implementation to commemorate this important milestone. We ask you to save the dates, June 5th through June 8th of 2025, um, and to please participate in supporting the salute to Jockeys Ridge State Park, to all the people and the efforts that not only went into preserving the dune in 1973, along with Mayor Carl Nunamaker and the town of Nags Head, and all those through the years who continue to save our sand dune today and forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baum.
My name is Bob Mower, and I asked staff to put an image up on the screen. I don't know how many of you recognize that? It is a silkscreen print that was done by people to save Jockeys Ridge in 1973, '74, somewhere around there. It used to hang behind the mayor's chair in the old six-sided office building. It now hangs in the mayor's office. It is the first, I believe, piece of art ever added to the town's art collection. It was given to the town to symbolize the town's support for the preservation of Jockeys Ridge. That support actually predates Carolista's efforts, or Carl Nunamaker, talking about being, standing on top of Jockeys Ridge with a representative from state parks and being told that Jockeys Ridge would never be a state park. Obviously, that official didn't know what he was talking about. The town's role in supporting Jockeys Ridge was very important, Carl and Charles were both on the podium in 1975, when the celebration of the first park opened up. Jockeys Ridge appears on the town's seal. Jockeys Ridge is integral to the town. It's integral in an interesting way, because it was the first piece of Nags Head the town participated in the preservation of, of a natural landmark rather than development. It and Nags Head Woods are symbolic of the town's value to preserve and use its natural beauty as part of its calling card, as part of its image, as part of its core set of, of values. I rise today to ask you to support the celebration, the fiftieth celebration. You have it on your agenda later in Commissioners', uh, in your Commissioners' agenda, and I urge all of you to support that allocation, um, and participate with us as we celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of one of the keystones of the town of Nags Head. Thank you very much. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the fiftieth. Planning is still going on. I have a meeting at noon today to talk about what projects we'll have within that planning that will carry forward, the legacy projects will be, that will carry forward to commemorate that, that anniversary and show our feeling for it, uh, as we move past, uh, 2025 and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mower, and congratulations on your Town Lightkeeper Award. Does anybody else wish to provide public comment? Yes, Ms. Sadler.
Good morning, I'm Anna Sadler, and I did not realize, Bob, it was the fiftieth anniversary for Jockeys Ridge. Moving here on the oceanfront across from Jockeys Ridge in 1968, I can tell you, it was an awesome sight. And Carolista Baum is to be congratulated for getting out there in front of that bulldozer. I remember that. And I will say this, to my knowledge and my research, we hosted the very first persons to actually hang glide down Jockeys Ridge, and that was Peter Brock and his wife in 1969 or '70, and they were from California. They wanted a soft landing, and so they came to Jockeys Ridge. But even, I want to say thank you to your Public Works Department. They go over and beyond, and I know that so many people in Nags Head do not know what they do. I'm sure Nancy could spin half the morning telling us, but I want to say this, in doing real estate from Corolla to Manio, there is not another town that provides the service to its community that Public Works does. And I'm speaking specifically about picking up debris that we just put out in the right of way, and it disappears.
Yes.
From October to the end of April.
Yes.
And I go to other towns and I say, "Well, you can just put..." "Oh, no, we cannot." I said, "Well, oh, we gotta pick up once a month." I said, "Really? Well, you ought to move to Nags Head." And unfortunately, or fortunately, we've had a lot to move to Nags Head. And I did speak to one of the Public Works people earlier this morning, and I said, "You know, I don't think the new people that are moving in can read." And it is publicized that you pick up if you put it out, October 1 to April 30th. Well, a lot of folks that didn't read, the town went another month this year, till the end of May, and I just want to thank Public Works and all of the people involved in that. It's amazing, it really is. And thank you all for having such a wonderful Public Works Department.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler. Does anybody else wish to comment at this time? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I will, since that is over, I'll do a couple of things here. Um, one, thank you, Anna, we really appreciate that. Our Public Works are champions, and we're gonna celebrate them later today. I hope you can be there, I hope you will be there. Um, the other thing is, um, since, um, since it is a, a different kind of body, um, I will, I will ask if the board members have any questions of the Jockeys Ridge organizers that you need to ask this morning? Okay, I see none, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That brings us to, uh, the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. Um, that brings us to a, um, public hearing, and I turn it back to Mr. Leidy again.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will, uh, open the public hearing to consider citizen comment on the manager, town manager's proposed operating budget for July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2025, the proposed, uh, capital improvement project requests for, uh, the fiscal year 2425 through 2829, and the updated, I'm sorry, updated consolidated fee schedule. Uh, we'll begin, uh, the presentation, uh, of this, I believe, with the presentation of the budget, uh, or any further comments regarding the budget, uh, by, uh, town manager?
Thank you, John. So obviously, we presented the budget to the board at the May regular meeting. Um, we had had two workshops with the board prior to that meeting. Uh, we are following a little bit different process, uh, in recent years, where we tried to meet with the board, you know, in the late fall, have a strategic planning workshop, then we followed it up with several pre-budget workshops to sort of align the expectations of the board with the manager's recommended budget, and we tried to prepare the recommended budget, uh, so it, it meets expectations of the board, and our hope is that there are fewer changes to the budget after we present it, uh, to the town, uh, once that occurs. So we did that, I presented it on, on the May, May regular meeting. Uh, you have before you a budget that has not changed since that time at our workshop. Uh, subsequent to the May meeting, we discussed the budget, the board did not request any changes at that time, and, uh, I'd like to think that that's because we had the pre-budget workshops that we did, so I appreciate that. Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you so much to all of the staff, uh, and Amy Miller for all the work that you do in preparing the budget. Um, I think the process and the budget itself is a reflection of, of your work and the staff in our finance department and Jan. I just want to thank you and thank the board for all of your, uh, support in the budget process, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, board, any questions? Bob?
None at this time, no.
No questions, just thank town staff for the work and Andy for his direction. I mean, it's, I said earlier, seamless, it's just such an easy process.
Right.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate that coming from someone who's in that process many years. Commissioner Sears?
Just echo what Commissioner Brinkley said.
All right, Commissioner Lam?
No questions, just thank you to the town staff for all your hard work.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right. All right, so at this time, does any member of the public wish to comment on the proposed budget, uh, or the proposed CIP requests, or the consolidated fee schedule? Any comment at all? All right, uh, if not, at this time, we'll conclude the public hearing, and the board may consider the adoption of the various items. I do recommend that the board actions be taken, uh, individually, one at a time, so we have a record of each individual action, if you're gonna take action at this time.
Yes, sir. Um, so I'll ask the board, uh, what is your pleasure? Do you wish to proceed with approving the budget today?
Yes, make a motion to, uh, adopt the pay plan that has been presented.
All right, have a motion to adopt the pay plan. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. A motion on the organizational chart would be in order.
Say moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the organizational chart as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Uh, that brings us to the CIP request, and a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, is there a sec? I have a motion and a second to approve the capital improvement program request as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Uh, consolidated fee schedule, a motion would be in order?
Say moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consolidated fee schedule as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Uh, that brings us to the budget ordinance, and a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion, sir. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2425 budget ordinance, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. And finally, the amended, uh, capital investment fund policy, a motion. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended capital investment fund policy, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much, again, thank you. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, thank you, staff. Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mueller. John, you may continue with the next item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider text amendment, a text amendment to prohibit driving or parking on residential septic systems. Again, on this matter, the body sits as a legislative body, therefore, sworn testimony is not required. But we will begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Joe Costello.
Hello. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, commissioners. The proposed text amendment before you today, if adopted, would prohibit parking and driving on septic system areas on residential properties throughout the town. It would also provide a mechanism for staff to enforce violators by issuing a notice of violation. We would do that, and the remedy for the notice of violation would be to install a physical barrier, which could include post and rope, fencing with proper setback, landscape beds, or other potential remedies. Staff will also look during the residential site plan review process and see if there are large residential properties or others that have the potential for overflow of parking onto septic areas and make the recommendations to install that prior to them developing it. We also are looking to include definitions that aren't currently in the code for septic tank, dispersal field, disposal field, septic system, and septic system area. And most importantly, we'll continue our outreach and education efforts on the importance of septic health and try to work with property owners, management companies, and contractors to basically get the word out prior to this going forward. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Just to clarify, as I read this, this does not preclude parking on repair, designated repair areas, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. I will start at this end. Bob, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I think it's a great idea to help protect the homeowners that don't realize they can damage their septic systems.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Commissioners?
I believe this is something that came out of our Septic Health Initiative Committee, and then Planning Board Member Lambert was one that initiated that. Now she's on the board and gets to help pass it. So, thank you for your assistance in that. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Sears?
No, great idea. Great.
All right. Commissioner Lambert?
I'm very thankful to see this ordinance move forward. I think it's a huge step in the right direction.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Leidy?
Any other questions from the board? Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? Yes, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Bob Mueller, Nag's Head, it's a great ordinance. It's another piece in the Town Septic Health Initiative that goes back almost 25 years now, and it follows in the non-compulsory, non-regulatory methods of trying to help people take better care of their, of the town's wastewater infrastructure. I encourage you to pass it. It is much needed, as Commissioner Sears well knows. He has signs on his driveway, edge of his driveway, telling folks to stay off his drain field. So, thank you very much on behalf of the entire Septic Health Committee. We appreciate you considering this, bringing it forward, and we look forward to seeing you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? If not, does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may take action regarding this proposed text amendment.
If the board wishes to proceed with this, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Thank you, staff. Thank you, planning board. Thank you, septic health folks for bringing this forward. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. Mr. Leidy, that brings us to the next item.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider text amendments submitted by Jordan Harrell of Jernigan Oil Company, Inc. to allow LED digital displays for fueling stations. And we will begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Planning Director Kelly White.
Thank you. Good morning again. As was stated, this text amendment has been requested by Michael and Jordan Harrell of Jernigan Oil Company. If adopted, this would allow for the use of digital LED signage for the purpose of displaying essentially gas prices only. The application for Mr. Harrell was included in your packet, and in there, he had noted that the primary reason that he's requesting this is because right now, with the type of pricers that gas stations use, they have to have a suction cup that they go out there and change the gas prices out daily. So, well, as it changes. And it can be several days go by, it could also be up to twice a day that they're out there having to change these fuel prices. So, it does present a safety issue for staff, having them out there doing that throughout the day. And also, in this environment with the high winds, those digits can fly away as well. So, when we were first approached by Mr. Harrell about this, we immediately, as staff, went to look at the code where we saw that Section 10.22.6.17 of the sign ordinance states that LED and digital signs are prohibited. And looking at the definition, it was essentially speaking to exactly what Mr. Harrell was requesting. The language of Section 10.22.6.17, which states that LED signs are prohibited, that was adopted January 4, 2012. At the November 15, 2011 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed various documents and put forward a recommended ordinance for a complete prohibition of LED and digital signage. That staff report and those minutes are included in your packet for consideration. It's noted that fuel price displays were specifically mentioned, and not all members of the Planning Board were opposed to digital signage for this purpose, provided that it was regulated properly. The Board of Commissioners then discussed this at their December 7, 2011 meeting, before voting to adopt the proposed prohibition on digital and LED signage at their January 4, 2012 meeting. All of those minutes are included in your packet. Primary concern appears to be the potential proliferation of signage, of digital LED signage, especially those that flash, rotate, move, or are animated. There were aesthetic concerns regarding whether this type of signage maintains the town's visual appeal and character, and perhaps it could contribute to light pollution and affect the night sky visibility and potentially distract drivers. The Planning Board, their March 19, 2024 meeting, reviewed and recommended the adoption of the proposed text amendments to the UDO that would permit the use of LED digital signage exclusively to display fuel prices, provided that certain regulations were met. And that ordinance is included in your packet for your review. You can see how we approached it at that time. But shortly after, the town attorney took a look at this and expressed some concerns that this might run afoul of the Supreme Court decision Reed versus Town of Gilbert as it relates to the content neutrality of signage. And I've provided a lot of background on that in your packet as well. I'm sure you're familiar with it. I won't go into all of it right now. Attorney Leidy noted that the town's current prohibition on LED and digital signs is a valid content neutral regulation of speech as it doesn't differentiate based on the content of the speech. However, creating an exemption specifically for fuel prices would likely introduce content-based discrimination as it would allow certain messages to, it restricted others that conveyed through LED and digital signs. In light of these concerns, staff, in consultation with the attorney and the applicant, did propose an alternative approach. The revised ordinance language would incorporate the LED digital display standards into the use regulations for fueling stations. So, it's not part of the actual sign regulations. It's just going to be part of the supplemental regulations associated with the use of fueling stations, and those are in 7.20 of the UDO. The standards would govern the maximum dimensions of the display, the number of the character panels, and the frequency of rotation. Based upon the information provided by the applicant, the minimum display area needed for the use of the 16-inch digits, which is what they would like to use, is approximately 42 inches by 19 inches. This allows for three characters or digits and a panel for that fraction that you typically see in a fuel price, nine over 10. In applying this restriction, staff believes that it meets the needs of the applicant while maintaining content neutrality. It is important to note that the provision would technically allow a gas station to display a word within those four blocks. We don't envision that happening, but because we can't mandate that it's a number, there's nothing that would prohibit them from writing any four-letter word in there, if you write "as" if they wanted to. I don't think they will, but I wanted to mention it that they could. And additionally, as it's proposed, the amendment would restrict the display from changing more than once in a 24-hour period. As was seen in the minutes, and I'm sure as many of you are aware, the town has had valid concerns about signs with rotating, flashing, moving, and alternating lights. However, it is worth revisiting the possibility of allowing digital signs exclusively for fuel price displays. Although we can't specify that the display is solely for gas digits, we have proposed a set of narrow restrictions, expecting that they will primarily be used for that. In your staff report, I've listed some policy considerations from our comprehensive plan. At their April 16, 2024 meeting, the Planning Board voted five to one to recommend adoption of the text amendment as it's proposed. Planning Board Member Mr. Ferguson cast the nay vote, stating a concern that if gas stations are allowed to have digital signs, that the potential for other businesses to follow may occur. So, at the time, the Planning Board did ask for a little bit more information and detail to be provided in terms of actual brightness and illuminance of LED digital displays. And I included an excerpt from the Outdoor Advertising Association of America in your packet, but it speaks to how LED displays are generally regulated, and they're done so by using a measurement of foot candles or a measurement of knits. And a foot candle is going to be a measurement of illuminance on a surface, whereas a knit is going to be a measure of illuminance perpendicular to the light source itself. We don't have an instrument that can measure knits, but we do have the instrument that can measure foot candles. And if you read through that document from the Outdoor Advertising Association, they actually recommend the use of foot candles because when you use foot candles, it's taking into, it's taking account of the ambient light around that illuminance source, not necessarily just the LED character itself. And what they recommended and what most places who do regulate LED digital signage rely on is that if you're going to allow your digital signs, they shouldn't exceed 0.3 foot candles above ambient light. So, it's a little bit of work on staff's part, but we're happy to do it should it were going to be adopted. We would be ascertaining the foot handle measurements of a site prior to the digital display at certain times of day during certain weather conditions, and then going back out there once the display is illuminated, same time of day, hopefully under similar weather conditions, to make sure we're not going over that 0.3. I believe that is it. I'll pull up the ordinance in case we want to look at the regulations specifically as they're proposed, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And then we do have Michael Harrell from Jernigan Oil available as well. If you have questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
Questions?
Commissioner Sears?
Questions?
Commissioner Brinkley?
Questions?
Commissioner Sanders?
Questions.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. Does the applicant wish to provide any information on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, thank you for considering this this morning. I'm Michael Harrell from Hoski, North Carolina. Run a family business, Jernigan Oil Company. We've been down at the beach now for roughly 25 years with our locations. And just a little background, Kelly did a great job, and she's done a lot of research and a background, and she's gone over and beyond on this thing. I appreciate that. But kind of the gist of why we're requesting this is technology's changed over time. The way we change prices at our locations is now it's all remote. We can do it from a cell phone or a computer in our office, and it goes straight to the cash register, the pumps, and the sign all at one time within 30 seconds versus traditionally, and the way we're doing it now, we would have to send an email out. Somebody in the store would have to get the email. Then they would have to go change it. Then they would have to go get the numbers from the back with the suction cup, go to the sign. With the staffing issues and labor, we might not have a one person changing the price, so it might lag a day. It's a safety issue, as Kelly said, going in the parking lot. We've had employees actually get run over in a parking lot with the wind. The suction cup blows it off. We've had them get hit in the eye, cut their forehead. So, that's, digits sometimes get broken when they're dropped, so then we have to get more digits, so the sign might not be complete. It might be missing a digit, so you're not sure exactly what the price is. And it's, as Kelly said, we've requested 16-inch digits, not a great big sign, nothing flashing. We don't want to put anything but the gas price, what's there now. And there's only seven gas stations in Nag's Head now, so it wouldn't apply to a whole lot of businesses, and we're not asking for anything other than just to display the gas price signage. I appreciate your consideration. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Board, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? Does the board wish to receive any other information? All right. At this time, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations on the proposed text amendment.
Board, how do you wish to proceed? Put a motion on the floor?
I'd make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Thank you. I appreciate the work, again, of Planning Board and staff, Kelly, everybody working together on this. I appreciate the concern. I think we appreciate the concerns, but it seems like a pretty tight ordinance, and I appreciate the way it was developed and the application of it. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Kelly, we need you back. That would be, that concludes the public hearings. Ready for your report?
All right.
That Lilly helps you with.
Well, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at this. I won't, I say I won't go into great detail on any of it, but sometimes I do. I apologize. But at the Planning Board's May 21 meeting, they did hear an update about the LED signage that we just spoke about. I mean, they received a presentation on our CRS program. We were supposed to have our three-year verification cycle visit from CRS, actually last month, but it was rescheduled. So, now that's going to be happening on August 28, so we have a little bit more time to prepare, which is great. But that is coming up. The Planning Board's next meeting is on June 18, and they'll be considering the third iteration of the Inn at Wellbone, the hotel down around Lakeside. So, there's been some minor changes to lot coverage and building size, some substantial changes to stormwater management. I mean, they're requesting some leniency on the condition that was previously placed.
I mean, they're requesting some leniency on the condition that was previously placed on there regarding Lakeside Drive becoming a three la- uh, three-lane, um, a three-lane road. Um, so in May, we had no board of adjustment items. Um, Septic Health Advisory Committee, thank you uh, this morning for adopting the uh, text amendment that originated from them. Uh, we're working on several things for the implementation of the DWMP, um, ordering that GPS unit that we talked about so that we can go locate septic systems, um, and working on getting four more water quality loggers. Um, staff is still pursuing several grants for implementation of the Estrian Shoreline Management Plan. Um, sand relocation has wrapped up. Um, there's, there's fifteen thousand of the four hundred thousand remaining. When I wrote this report, there's probably about ten thousand remaining now um, for the uh, doing cost share management plan. Uh, but work is ceased. Our staff is doing their final inspections, um, and everything seems to be pretty good out there other than a handful of locations that they're working with um, working with the property owner and the contractor on right now. Um, staff has been informed that the pre-application for the NC Public uh, Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access, uh, we were selected for final application, fair improvements to June Street uh, beach access, so we'll be working on that. Um, included in your packet was a memo regarding the um, Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Um, as part of the town's participation in the CRS program, we are required to provide updates on the actions contained in that plan. Staff provided a memo in the spreadsheet outlining the updates to the action plan for the Board of Commissioners Review. Um, this is just for informational purposes, um, but happy to answer any questions if you have them. And um, provided some updates on Doughty Park events, Farmer's Market, and Art and Culture. Um, yoga is ongoing and um, seems to be gaining a lot of traction. I think there's more and more participants um, each morning according to the event coordinator, Paige Griffin. Um, Fitness Fridays will be starting in June. We have our summer concert series. Uh, that's Wednesday evening, six-thirty to eight. Uh, June nineteenth is Black Pearl, and June twenty-sixth is Uphill. Both of these are local bands. Um, the Farmer's Market uh, starts to ramp up on June thirteenth. And that will be also on the twentieth and twenty-seventh in the month of June, um, nine AM to one PM. Uh, we're going to have one movie in the month of June. That's going to be uh, Friday, June seventh, at eight PM. And um, then I included this image here. Uh, the Art and Culture Committee, one of the items they identified was to do a pedestrian, a a crosswalk art project. And they're going to be doing that in conjunction with the um, Manio High School Honors Art Students. So this is just a draft of what they're thinking about doing. Um, and of course, this would not take place until after the busy season, probably towards the end of fall. So that's all I have for today. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for Kelly?
No questions. Just thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate it. Uh, that brings us to um, old business, uh, items tabled from previous meetings, and that would be a report on the multifamily ordinance working group. Handy?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, we, we wanted to give an update on the uh, work of the multifamily working group. Just real quickly, uh, we wanted to acknowledge the members that were participating in this group. We had uh, Commissioners Kevin Brinkley and Megan Lambert, uh, planning board members May, Mead Gwynn and Molly Harrison, uh, local business owner, T W's Chris Greening, uh, lo- local resident, uh, Nagshead resident Basil, Basil Belches, and um, Donna Creef with the Outer Banks Home Builders Association, and Duke Garrity, or Donna's with the Realtors Association, and Duke is with the Home Builders Association. And then finally, uh, our staff, Kelly and Joe and myself worked on this. Um, just some background real quick. Obviously, in late twenty twenty-two, the da- the town adopted a moratorium uh, on multifamily development, and subsequently eliminated multifamily from the ordinance in order to rewrite the standards for multifamily. Um, town wanted to consider where were the best places for multifamily and under what standard should it be approved? Um, so we also no longer allowed multifamily in the C-five district near Jacque's Ridge and the Historic Cottage Row. Um, Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board participated in a joint workshop, I believe that was last summer, uh, to provide guidance on a new ordinance. Um, cons- consensus was to consider the multifamily in the C-two district possibly limited to high activity areas, and one would be primarily in the northern part of town, and the other would be sort of in the Whalebone area. But if we were going to allow multifamily back in the code, uh, it was going to be for housing and not for more short-term rentals, and so that was a pretty strong consensus of the group. Um, and then also the group discussed that we could do that possibly through the use of deed restrictions. Uh, the planning board worked on the ordinance uh, throughout twenty twenty-three. Uh, public hearing was held just recently in February. Uh, the board decided they wanted a little further review um, regarding the ordinance based on some concerns that the the ordinance itself uh, may create some barriers to the development of of housing. Um, in the past, uh, the town's multifamily ordinance uh, was just to allow housing units in a different form. Uh, the board and the planning board sort of refocused this this discussion uh, to to look at creating opportunities for workforce housing and long-term housing. And so it sort of shifted um, the focus in terms of looking at the town's vision solely and and also looking at what are we going to be able to do to generate uh, housing units? Uh, the Board of Commissioners came up with a charge, which was approved in March. Uh, obviously, the first goal was to consider the draft ordinance written by the planning board. Uh, second goal was to preserve the intent of the ordinance. Uh, I don't think the board suggested throwing the baby out with the bathwater with the original ordinance the planning board wrote. Uh, obviously, the goal is always to protect the character of Nagshead. Uh, but then we wanted to consider new alternatives for workforce and long-term housing without increasing the stock of short-term rentals. Um, so this was prime, the primary focus of the working group was to evaluate the standards in the ordinance that might make it difficult uh, to build housing. And this looks at uh, construction costs, land costs, and other things. And then also to suggest other measures beyond the ordinance itself to uh, achieve the goal of housing. So this is a summary of the planning board's version of the ordinance. Uh, obviously, it reintroduces multifamily uh, in the C-two district solely um, and also only adjacent to U S one fifty-eight. So it would be limited to a certain number of parcels, mainly large parcels directly adjacent to one fifty-eight. Um, it created two types of multifamily dwelling categories, large and small. Uh, the minimum lot width for the large category would be a hundred and fifty feet. The minimum lot area for the large category is twenty-six thousand square feet. Those two standards were similar to the ordinance as it was prior to having it removed. Uh, the minimum lot width for the small, uh, there was no minimum, and then the minimum lot area for the small was sixteen thousand square feet. So that, that's a s- pretty significant change from the ordinance prior to it being removed. Uh, both of these um, types of multifamily would be permitted through a special use permit, which would come to the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. Um, fifty-five percent lot coverage, that's the standard for commercial development in the town. Both would be, would fall under that standard, and then the height would essentially be what it is uh, for most things in the town, thirty-five and forty-two feet. Um, the minimum unit size uh, was eight hundred square feet, and that that had been in the ordinance for a long time. And then the maximum unit size, the planning board came up with a maximum of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet. And um, both of these would be allowed to have accessory structures. So uh, this goes over the density from the old, uh, not, well, this is the, the first item here is the old ordinance prior to the planning board um, making the draft. Uh, essentially, the density's regulated, and you have to have twenty-six thousand square feet of land area uh, in order to do it. And and that's for the first three units, and then you have to have thirty-five hundred square feet of land area for each additional unit um, beyond three. And there was no maximum in the ordinance on the total number of units. The planning board proposed uh, three units for the first twenty-six thousand square feet of lot area and forty-five hundred square feet for each additional unit for the large category. Um, for the small category, it was three units for the first sixteen thousand square feet of lot area and thirty-five hundred square feet for the, each additional unit. So obviously, with with these standards, the the planning board was sort of encouraging the small form. I think the planning board felt like that these smaller developments would be more in keeping with with the Nagshead vision and character. Uh, the planning board did come up with a maximum number of units of sixty for the large category and and six for the small category. So uh, the joint workshop, the planning board, the Board of Commissioners talked about uh, restricting these multifamily units to certain uh, occupancies, mainly workforce and long-term housing. And so this is something that the town has not really done in the past, that it would be a new thing. It's obviously, obviously something that's being discussed across the county. At this time, several communities have adopted ordinances that would deed restrict units. I believe Kilda Hill's recently approved a development that would deed restrict the units to long-term use. Um, so we, we looked at the occupancy of ninety days or more in terms of long-term, and then the ordinance uh, defines uh, creates definitions to enforce the workforce housing provisions. And so essentially, the planning board ordinance said for the large category, sixty percent of the units would have to be deed restricted for workforce housing, and then the remainder could be for long-term. None of the units could be used for short-term rentals. Um, so the planning board also looked at for the large category focusing mainly on townhouses. Uh, up on the screen are several of the reasons the planning board uh, discussed in terms of preferring townhouse-style development. Um, and then the small category wasn't limited to townhouses, so it could be a single building with apartment style or or flat-style development. So now we're getting into the working group. Um, the, the working group obviously started to look at some of the challenges to developing multifamily. Obviously, in the current environment, land costs are high, construction costs are very high, and interest rates are high. So the reality is that there could be a point where no matter what we do, we may not be able to achieve the multifamily development or the the housing that we want. But I think we're just trying to create the best environment for that that we can. Um, so we, we spoke to some people locally that had expertise in in housing and in commercial land development. Obviously, uh, they encouraged us to look at increasing the number of units allowed, um, thereby reducing the land cost per unit, um, trying to reduce the construction cost if at all possible. One way to do this would be to look at the unit sizes um, and the rents that you could charge based on the size of the units. The previous uh, m- minimum was eight hundred square feet. Obviously, if we can get that down a little bit, it it reduces the overall cost for for each unit. Um, and then we also discussed uh, opening this up to more properties in the town than just along the bypass. And so one of the things that the group discussed was looking at density in other ways instead of just looking at units per acre, and so we discussed using a floor-area ratio for the large category. Uh, the working group uh, didn't, didn't veer away from the deed restrictions or the occupancy requirements. So essentially, what the planning board came up with was was left intact in terms of the large and small categories. And then the goal remained the same, to create housing opportunities for the workforce and and residents, but not create more short-term rentals. So for the large category, this is a summary of what the working group came up with. Uh, rather than using the units per acre, uh, they looked at using a floor-area ratio. And so we looked at um, what are some other standards in the town that we already have that that we can look to for guidance? The one primary standard is the uh, large, large residential dwelling ordinance the board adopted in early two thousands. Essentially, we allow a house to be up to five thousand square feet if you have a sixteen thousand square-foot lot. And so if you calculate the floor-area ratio for that, that ends up being point three-two. And so we said, okay, well, can we consider regulating this through a point three-two floor-area ratio? And so that's what the working group decided to do. And so uh, essentially, you wouldn't have a a number of units per acre, but you would be regulating the the development based on an overall volume. And so we looked at some hypothetical scenarios um, based on the planning board's ordinance and and using this method. And we determined that while the number of units that you could achieve for a piece of land would be greater, that the overall volume would probably be less i- in in actuality. So um, obviously, you can look at density in different ways, one being the overall density of the building and the other being the density of people. Um, the, the group also looked at reducing the overall unit size. Uh, they came up with a minimum size of five hundred square feet for like a studio-type apartment um, and a maximum of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet. That was essentially the planning board's recommendation. And they also looked at incorporating some size categories into the ordinance. So if you built a mul- a a one-bedroom or a studio, it was five hundred. Two-bedroom minimum would be seven hundred, and a three-bedroom minimum would be one thousand square feet. And then they also put in a provision to try to encourage some diversity in the the number or the the mixture of units. So it, the uh, the provision that they came up with was no more than sixty percent of the units should be from any unit-size category. You, that way, you couldn't build all five hundred square-foot one-bedroom units. You would have to build a mixture of one or two bedrooms or two or three bedrooms, you know, so on and so forth. But at least you're trying to encourage a mixture. And then um, one thing that they came up with to to look further at density and and amassing of these structures on a property is to limit the individual building sizes to ten thousand square feet, and that that wasn't in the planning board ordinance, but but in in light of modifying the density criteria, they felt like that would it would be a good protection for the town. Uh, and then the, the planning board really focused mainly on townhouses. I think this group decided that apartments or townhouses um, would be okay if we're really trying to encourage housing. You know, if you're building a five hundred square foot or a seven hundred square foot unit, it's really hard to do that in the form of a townhouse. Um, and then they stuck with the only-fronting U S one fifty-eight for the large, and then a special use permit would be required for those. So there would still be design review. It'd still come to the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, so that would provide still some additional protections for the large category for for the town. Um, the small category, uh, we, we looked at density a little bit differently in this, in this category, given that, you know, you're talking about a fifteen thousand square-foot lot potentially. Um, and that, you know, if you could build up to a five thousand square-foot building on a fifteen thousand square-foot lot, you know, you could cut it up into like eight tiny units, and is that what we really want on a small property? So uh, we decided not to look at the floor-area ratio for this category, but to stick with units per acre. And so we came up with one per four thousand square feet of land area. And so essentially, you could do it if you had a fifteen thousand square-foot lot, you could have three units. If you went up to sixteen thousand square foot for the lot, you could have four units, and then twenty thousand for five, and so on. And so it does step up the number of units you can have with the um, the lot size. Uh, we talked about allowing the small multifamily category in the C-two district entirely and not just limit, limiting it. Uh, the working group stuck with the maximum of six units uh, for a small category development. Um, the maximum building size would be five thousand square feet, so this is similar to a large residential dwelling. Um, you would be allowing this, I already said that. Um, the big thing here is that they didn't, they wanted this to be easier for people to do, and so essentially, we would approve this administratively, would not come to the planning board, would not come to the board. You could go to the planning department and apply for a permit, kind of like you do for a large residential dwelling. We would review the architecture. It would be the same architectural requirements for a large residential dwelling, and then you could get a permit without having to come before the boards. Um, so that was a summary of the two uh, categories that they reviewed in the ordinance. There's some things left to work on. You know, I would note that uh, this is a recommendation from the working group, and it still would need to go back to the planning board. Uh, by law, that's required. Uh, we still need to come back to the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing. Um, we have spoken about the enforcement of the deed restrictions and and how that would occur. I, I talked to John Liede about this, and we're still discussing the best. I I've talked to John Leidy about this, and we're still discussing the best ways to do that. But we might have some recommended changes on that prior to it moving forward to the planning board. And so just want to let everybody know that we're working on that. We might have some tweaks to the language that were in the ordinance you saw in your packet. One thing that the group discussed at the meeting last time that we really didn't have a chance to get through, but I think this is a really important element to the ordinance, is allowing the multifamily housing to occur on commercial development or on commercial sites with existing development. And so a business owner could build housing for their employees on the same site as their as their business. And so we need to come up with some standards for this. The difficult part for this is that when you're trying to regulate density, how do you how do you build in the fact that you've already got development on the property? And so we sort of tossed around some ideas at the last working group meeting, but I don't think we really got the whole way through that. But that that could be something that we continue to work on, it may may track separately from the the bulk of the ordinance. An interesting idea we talked about was the town's standard for duplex development. You know, we're now talking about deed restricting units for workforce housing. You know, we have a standard in the R-two district, I'll take that as an example. We allow minimum lot sizes in the R-two district of twenty thousand square feet. But if you want to build a duplex, the lot size increases substantially over that. Well, if you have a sixteen thousand square-foot lot, you can build a five thousand square-foot home. So that could most likely be a rental home, and you'll probably have an occupancy of anywhere from sixteen to twenty people in that one one single-family dwelling. So what if the town decided to modify its requirements for duplexes to allow a duplex on a lot that meets the minimum lot size for the district of, you know, twenty thousand square feet in the R-two district? And you still limit the overall size of the duplex. Both units would would be no larger than you could build for a single unit, and it would also be deed restricted for workforce housing. So an example would be the new coastalway subdivision north of the post office. You know, if the board made this change, then you could end up with, you know, two two thousand, two twenty-five hundred square-foot duplexes on one property that would be deed restricted for workforce housing. And in both units, you'd likely have, you know, a family. So it would be maybe three to four people in each unit. So overall, the 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 bulk of the units wouldn't be larger than a a large residential dwelling, and probably the number of people wouldn't be more than that either. So I think the the working group thought that was an interesting idea. It's obviously not part of the ordinance, but it is something that they thought we would be interesting to look at as a way to get additional housing. I already said that the planning board would need to review this recommendation again, and obviously, we need to schedule a public hearing after a planning board review. So that is the summary. You know, we we did set up a website for the the working group. We included a link to that in your packet, so all the minutes from the meetings are there, all the notes and the agendas. And so feel free to look at that and be happy to answer any questions or take any suggestions.
I do want to take the opportunity to ask questions of of Andy. I would like for our board members who served on this task force to speak to this, if you would, Commissioner Brinkley.
The fellow members that were on the committee, we made Commissioner Lambert, the two planning board member, or I'm sorry, me, Seer, Molly is not. We had Doug Garrity, Donna Creef, Basil, and Chris Greening. I think I've got everybody, but I want to thank everybody that that participated. I think we had very insightful conversations in there. It's uh, everybody had, you know, brought something to the table, and it wasn't controlled by any one person or any, you know, it wasn't controlled by the bill home builders or the board of realtors or the commissioners. I think we all were able to 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 talk and offer our our comments and suggestions, and they were respectfully received, and then we talked about it. So I just thought it was it was an excellent way to come together. And again, it reminded me of the stormwater committee that Commissioner Sears and I were on, that we don't, that really, that was a working, working group. So I really hope that, I don't know what other questions may come up, and I may have other comments, but I really hope that what I believe we have here has not sold the town out on its values. This, I think, and we we, I've said it before, we may not get anybody that comes in. That's fine, we're not, we're not willing to go, but so far, to do it. But I think what we have here certainly allows some latitude for a developer or builder to come in and be able to do some needed workforce housing. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
I echo what Commissioner Brinkley said. I thank all the working group members. I also am very thankful for the town staff. And I'd also like to thank the planning board. I know that they've spent a lot of time on this ordinance as well, and I'm looking forward to seeing this go back to the planning board and hearing their recommendations and their input in light of the recommendations from this working group.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the for the manager?
No questions.
No questions?
Maybe more for the board than the manager. I mean, I'm not sure, I just, I guess, um, they recommended eight hundred square feet, the planning board did, as the minimum, and the working group recommended five hundred. Is five hundred, I mean, I don't have a lot of knowledge of this personally. Is five hundred small, or is that?
We we had several people, I mean, share with us examples of units that were more like efficiency or studio studio units that had been designed to that size. And they seemed to function pretty well, they seemed to be adequate.
At the five hundred?
At the five hundred. You know, and obviously, we we looked at other examples of other communities and and what's being developed, like for instance, in Raleigh. And I know I know NAGS head's not Raleigh, but a lot of the apartments that they're building downtown for mostly working people are anywhere from five hundred to a thousand or eleven hundred square feet. But that's what you're really seeing now for the ranges of these unit sizes based on one, two, and three bedrooms. So I think the the layouts are pretty efficient. They're focusing really on the amenities that are being offered at the at the complex. But I I think it's a way for them to, you know, charge the rent they need to to make a profit and also get the construction costs down. Because, you know, right now, you know, our construction costs, we've heard anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-plus per square foot. And so shaving a couple hundred square feet off of a unit makes a big difference when you're talking about over the course of sixty units.
And I'd like to reiterate, some of that information came from Mr. Harold.
It did.
And then some of the other units that have been built in other areas we considered. We didn't just grab a number out of the, out of the room.
I got you.
From Andy's interview with Bobby, and then some information from from KDH, from the town, I mean, not town staff, but town, from the website of the units that they have up there.
We we talked a little bit about the the teacher housing that's been constructed, and they wanted to look at that. And and so what we had seen so far was mostly two-bedroom units they had developed. And now there's there's a demand for one-bedroom units, and I think they're actually working on that. But I think they learned from the initial project that they they did need to diversify the unit sizes to offer, you know, what people need that are moving into the area.
Yeah.
So we need to, this will go back to the to the planning board. Bob, to your your question, I designed an accessory dwelling unit for my daughter, and they wanted to stay, they had to stay within, by ordinance, they got an exception, but they had to stay within the footprint of their garage or carport that they were tearing down. So it was twenty by twenty. So it has a four hundred square-foot one-bedroom unit, which is cramped. It is, I will tell you, that is very tight. Five hundred is is feasible. I'll also tell you, we've done a lot of two-bedroom units in the past. Anything less than a thousand square feet is really hard to get two decent, two decent bedrooms, especially if you're trying to get two baths in there, it's hard. So it's that in-between, you know, that's 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 difficult. I I would I would say, you know, I tried to, you know, stay away from this process as it as it worked once the once the committee was appointed, because I I think I said, you know, I was happy with the task force, the membership of the task force was, you know, intended to intended to be happy with what they recommended. And I I want to thank the, you know, the the planning board for getting us most of the way there, and I want to thank the task force for getting us the rest of the way there. And, um, you know, it it's, you know, whether anybody will come or not, we can't say. But I think this is, NAGS head's best offer, it's a good offer. It it is consistent with, I think, the town's vision and standards and our interest in being as equitable with to our citizens as we and workforce as we can be. So if there is no objection, I think these recommendations will go then to the planning board.
Bye, Kevin.
No, I'm good. I'm looking forward to the, it's a good combination of both.
All right, great. Thank you, Andy, thank you, planning board, thank you, task force. Very grateful for your work. That brings us, so we can skip, you know, is the board interested in a break? Or is the board, okay, the board is interested in finishing, I I believe. So we will skip past our time-specific item, and we are doing well. And that brings us to committee reports. I need a, I need a basketball possession error to remind me which way I'm supposed to go. Commissioner Sanders here for committee reports, thank you, anything?
Committee report is coming up under my agenda, so.
All right, very good, thank you, sir. Commissioner Brinkley?
Jeanette's Pier Advisory Committee, we had a meeting last, last Thursday, I guess it was. The manager attended with me, and if I get something wrong or forget something, let me know. Their community are the students that have come on field trips. So far this spring, eighty-eight field trips, seven thousand five hundred students. So it's been very nice. They now have a full-time wildlife stranding director on staff. She gave a presentation. She's very experienced in that. Her husband actually works for the federal government, I believe, is that correct? So they kind of tag-team stuff together, so it's it's nice. They are getting some wildlife-friendly lighting. He showed us about that, which is good. That should be installed within the next month. The research building at the end of the pier is getting a new roof, which will allow for additional research equipment to be placed up on the roof. Won't be accessible to the public, just for the researchers. New decking, they're in the, they're in the design phase of that. Going away with the wood decking and looking to a, I think it was a concrete composite, was that right? That was stamped like wood. He had several pieces for us to look at, and the wind turbines. You know, I gave you an update on that a couple of months ago. He said, maybe in six months, but it could be longer than that.
Very good.
And then we had the multifamily group, and we've heard that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing from tourism, and I have my second committee task force for housing for the county on Friday.
Very good. Where is the event site with the boardwalk project?
Back in, from Camel, from the way it was originally designed, so they're in a new design stage.
Oh, very good, all right, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
No new news from government, education, access channel. We haven't met yet, but I do want to say I did just recently see your video. The access channel is doing meet the mayors, and then ultimately, I'll go to meet the commissioners. And I did just see Mayor Kahoon, your video.
Yep.
On the wall, so please check it out.
They are, they are, we're blessed to have an extremely professional asset in that group. They 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 do, they produce quality work, and they're, you know, they're very professional on site. I mean, they're just, they're great, they're great to work with. All right, that brings us to consideration of disaster debris removal. David. David's all dressed up, something special must be happening today.
Yes, good morning, mayor and commissioners. So annually, the town enters a pre-positions agreement for debris removal and monitoring agreements with with two separate companies. And those periods run annually from July one to July thirtieth. Currently, we have two active agreements. One is with DRC Emergency Services, and they provide debris removal services. And the other is with Debris Tech, who provides debris monitoring services. So we currently have those agreements. Those agreements are up for renewal. They, those agreements, the way that they typically work is there's an initial one-year period, then there's the option to extend for an additional three years for debris removal. We are entering our third year for debris removal services, and for the monitoring, it would be our second year. So the request is to go ahead and and renew the existing agreements that we have for both disaster debris removal and monitoring that would permit the town manager to execute those agreements that would take it from July one to July, or to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for David?
So we don't have to rebudget for this until next year for the one and the year happened for the other, correct?
There there are no fees that are associated with these agreements, and these agreements don't become active until we issue a notice to proceed. And that would be following this. But we do have the option to go ahead and get annual training from both of these, and we have been taking advantage of that.
Then, having heard David's report and hearing no questions, then a motion would be in order. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract renewals. Any further discussion?
Yes.
John, would that also be to authorize?
Authorize the town manager?
That's the motion.
Yep, all right, I will accept that as an amendment to the motion, so it is both to approve and to authorize the manager to to execute. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't leave. Do we have anything, John, from you other than closed-session items?
I'm trying to not slow y'all down, so no, sir.
All right, then, then hearing none, I will jump back to David for an update on public services.
Okay, so this has been an exciting month, this past, this past month. We've occupied our new administration building, and we were able to go ahead and reopen our brushyard operation. So what I will do is go back to the exhibit that I've been presenting all along, just denoting the progress for the various buildings at the Public Services Complex. We'll start on the right-hand side of the screen with the new address of twenty-two oh-three Lark Avenue, which is our administration building. This is a photo up here on the screen of where we were last month. We were getting close to occupation. Here's a view from the rear of our brushyard facility. And this month, we've got a couple drone photos that we're going to share with you that show the overall progress that has been made on the administration's site. Wanted to go ahead and thank Greg South from the Police Department for providing these. You can see from this overview, this is taken from the west side of Lark Avenue, looking back east towards the new administration building. We've gotten all the landscaping in, all the hardscapes are in place, and we are open for operation. Here's another view taken of the front of the facility. And here is one that was taken early morning. So everything is looking really nice, and you'll be able to see this firsthand whenever we have our ribbon cutting later this morning. Moving on to the upper-left-hand corner of the page is our water distribution building. This building is next up for occupation. Up here is a photo that we had taken from last month. And this is the interior of where the break room is. And this month, you can see they've been doing some exterior finishing work. Sidewalks and parking is in place. And you can see from the interior, this is the shop area that all the the final finishes are currently in progress. And you can see this is the break room, the appliances have been delivered. Yesterday, we took delivery of furniture, so we're getting close. The contractor indicates that we can potentially look at occupation the week of May seventeenth. The contractor indicates that we can potentially look at occupation the week of May seventeenth. Now, this is a little bit different from what I told you last month.
June seventeenth.
There, there has been some, some issues that the contractor has been working through. It's, it's a function of the mechanical systems, but they've come up with a workaround to go ahead and get some temporary measures in place, but we are getting close. On the, the equipment building here in the back, there hasn't been a whole lot of progress made on that because the focus has been on water distribution and the, and the fleet building as well as the vehicle storage building, which I'll bring up next. This is where we were last month, where the superstructure was in place, the exterior walls were going up and the roof was in place. This was a view that was taken from the north, looking back and this is where we are this month. All the interior slabs have been poured and a large portion of the exterior wall in place. So that building is progressing along and staying on track with that schedule. And lastly, I'll cover the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. This is a photo of the progress from last month. And this is looking interior to one of the bays on the fleet maintenance side of the operation. And this is where we are this month, we're starting to see some final finishing work here with, with the additional signage in place. We received appliances here within the past week or so and this is a photo of the, the lift pit, which is going in on the, on the fleet side of the, of the building. This has been one of the, one of the items which has, has delayed progress on the east side of the building, but we're, we're starting to see progress here. Now, we've been speaking with the contractor, we had a project meeting last week to talk about the potential for partial occupancy. We were joined by our chief building inspector, by our deputy fire chief to go ahead and talk about code-related issues to see if there is a path forward towards partial occupation and it looks like there is. And we are probably looking in, at a timeframe right now of about six to seven weeks out where we could possibly make that happen, so we're exploring all opportunities to go ahead and, and try to get our staff in there as soon as possible. We also know that we have a timeframe that we have to work within and there's a lot of other complexities and sequencing that needs to happen throughout the site when we occupy and finish out the, the perimeter site improvement, so. As I said, lots of, lots of work, lots of sequencing, lots of coordination is currently taking place and we'll be up there later this morning and you can see firsthand for yourself. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you both.
Thank you David. Board, any questions for David?
No David, look forward to seeing you.
Yep, indeed, very excited.
Thank you.
That brings us to discussion of a process for neighborhoods to request traffic calming. Andy or you and David, who's going to speak to this?
I think David is going to go ahead and give you an overview of, and ask you some questions about the direction for this.
Right, very good, thank you David.
All right, so recently we've, we've received several requests from west-side neighborhoods about the implementation of traffic calming measures. I, I think a lot of this stems from some of the, the pilot project that we conducted on Soundside Road several years ago with the installation of speed cushions and radar display signs. And, and so other neighborhoods who have speeding within their neighborhoods kind of cite that as an example of what they would like to see implemented in their neighborhoods. Currently we don't have a formal process to address those requests and so we thought that this would be a good opportunity to go ahead and just present an, an overview of a broad framework and this, the, the framework that we looked at was based upon what other communities have done, looked at about ten other municipalities within North Carolina, looked at what their framework is and came up with a list of questions for the board as to what direction you would like to go ahead and see this, this, this policy development go in. So first off, we'll start off with what is the purpose of developing a policy for traffic calming measures? It's to outline a process by which the town in Agghead addresses citizen requests related to transportation, safety concerns on town maintained streets. It's also to develop a policy which will assist the town staff in determining an appropriate course of action, evaluating and providing sensible and programmatic responses for each request and recommend certain actions to the board of commissioners for consideration and implementation. Give me one second. Okay, so applicability, first is to define what streets we would want to be included in this policy. Would it apply to all town maintained streets? Would it be geographically based? Would we just look at west-side neighborhoods where a large number of these requests have come from? Or would we try to apply it to certain street types? Now, within our ordinance, we have, we have five different street types and that's listed up here on the board. We've got a collector street, environmental street, a local access street, a major street and a sub-collector street. A major street really is, is one of the, one of the highways that runs through the town, that would be one fifty-eight or NC twelve, the beach road. So we wouldn't be applying it to either one of those roads, but all the rest of the categories would apply to town streets. And I've got the definitions up here for each one of these streets. The collector street, which is the largest street, really serves two-way traffic and that's for the larger neighborhoods where you have one to four hundred dwelling units. You've got the environmental street, which is one of the, the smaller streets, which is typically less than two thousand feet in length and only serves fifty dwelling units. You've got a local access street, which provides direct access to abutting properties and that typically serves about a hundred dwelling units. And then you've got a sub-collector street, which is any street which is less than sixty feet in right-of-way width. All right, so there's, there's a blueprint that most municipalities use for their procedures for going ahead and processing these types of requests. First is an application to be filed and this would be a formal application and it would define what the issue is, what the location and indicate what level of community support they have to go along with this request. Some of the applications that I saw had five additional members to go ahead and support the request that was included as part of the application, so that may be something that we want to consider upfront, just to know that the applicant who is making this request has some level of small support within the neighborhood. The, the second item within the procedural process is an initial assessment and the, the initial assessment is one to look at, is this a public street? Is it practical to go ahead and install traffic control or calming measures and will it functionally be effective? So that's just a high-level overview of does this qualify to go ahead and consider traffic calming measures? Then it proceeds on to an eligibility assessment and this is more data-driven. This is where you look at factors such as speed, traffic volume, length, the, the grades of the road, whether there is an accident history there associated with the road and then also evaluating the direct area of influence. And when I say direct area of influence, that would primarily be that those properties abutting that area of concern that are directly impacted either by the request or it could be impacted as a result of the implementation of these traffic calming measures. And then typically from there, there's a recommendation and most communities used a tiered approach. And that tiered approach looks at non-physical treatments, non-structural treatments and structural treatments. And really the, the non-physical treatments are really the low-cost, low-impact type of treatments and this could be increased enforcement or going ahead and recommending a neighborhood awareness campaign. The next level would be the non-structural treatments, which are a little bit higher cost, but also low impact. That could be the addition of, of signage within the neighborhood or pavement markings. And then lastly, you have your third tier, which are structural treatments, which are the higher cost, higher impact measures. And typically they would be something like we've seen on Soundside Road with the installation of speed cushions or the radar display signs in a permanent fashion. And so with, with the recommendations, what happens is if it meets the warrants that are laid out within the criteria, then it will move forward in the process. If not, then it could be deferred to either a tier one or a tier two level recommendation, which are those low-cost, low-impact type of, of, of measures that can be taken for the request. Additionally, community acceptance seems to be applied pretty universally with a lot of the frameworks that, that we reviewed and what we had seen as pretty much a standard is usually there's a petition, if it's, if it moves through the process and a tier three or level three recommendation is carried forward, then usually there is some support within the neighborhood where a petition is filed and there's typically a threshold that is applied to that. We've seen the range anywhere between sixty percent to eighty-five percent of the neighborhood would have to be in support of this request for that to be considered by the governing body. And then lastly is the, the funding, is, it, the funding really varies, sometimes that's supported a hundred percent by the community or sometimes there is a cost share between the, the local municipality and the applicant or that neighborhood request that is directly impacted by the area of influence of where the, the problem exists. So with all of that being said, I guess there are some, some questions, you know, based upon just a general framework and what we've seen with other municipalities, is what direction would we like for this policy development to go? And so when we met the other day with, among staff, the town manager, public services director and police chief, there are some items that, that came up to us based upon our experience and what we've seen. First off, what streets would this apply to? Would it be geographic based? Would it just be town-wide? Would it be based upon the street classification? Eligibility, so if it doesn't meet the warrants and those warrants are all data-driven, do we allow these applicants to move forward in the process? Is, is there, do we give them another opportunity to go ahead and progress forward for these requests? And maybe that's where we start looking at a cost share that if they don't meet the warrants, but they do have the support, maybe there's a willingness to go ahead and proceed forward with the application as long as they have a larger contribution to the cost of And as we look at eligibility, is the criteria that we've, we've laid out, which is the typical standard criteria by which most of these are evaluated, is there something that we need to massage? Do we need to add, delete? Is there something that we need to modify when we consider these types of requests? And then back to the, the funding, do we look at these as being a hundred percent funded by the town? If so, do we need to go ahead and budget annually for that? If not, do we look at a cost share option either for those requests that meet the warrants or do we also have an option for those that don't meet the warrants but still have a support within our community to go ahead and move forward? Do we want to go ahead and establish thresholds for the community support and do we want to put limitations on the improvement types of the, the various types of traffic, traffic calming measures? Some communities allow traffic circles, medians, canes, all sorts of treatments and do we just want to keep this simple and straightforward or do we want to open those options up? So that in a nutshell are, is kind of the broad overview of, of potential framework and some of these questions, I guess we're just asking for board feedback to see what direction we should go in with the development of this policy.
Okay, all right, thank you David. I made myself an error, so I may need to start on this end this time to, for, for your thoughts, Megan, in response to, to this.
I, I think we've seen a lot of emails lately from different neighborhoods, so I'm glad to see us talking about this, but I'm interested to see what the feedback is from the board.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Not being in the day-to-day of it, but only getting emails, I would lean towards the police chief, public services and David for a better suggestion on how they feel it needs to be handled, but personally I'd like to keep it simple without too many regulations.
Yep, okay, all right, very good, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
Much like you said, simple and straightforward.
Right.
I, I don't like just the data-driven, I think if we went strictly off data, some of the areas that we have, some devices may not have those if it was strictly off data. I think the community ought, ought to have some input and I like the sixty to eighty-five percent, whatever, whatever that may be. So there ought to be a different path forward instead of just data and it shuts off if they don't meet that, there ought to be a different direction for them to go if the community supports it. No community supports it, it's a done deal, in my opinion. Eligibility, I would like to see all town streets, but how would you gauge community support for area of Wright's Way Avenue or Memorial if there was an issue there? I don't have the answer for that, but I do appreciate your presentation and all the information.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah, I kind of echo what, what you've said and I like the, I like the direction it's going and I like the cost share problem as well, so yeah, I think you're going in the right direction, I appreciate it.
For, for me, I agree, I think it should apply to all the town streets, I, I don't think we can tell one group of citizens that they don't have recourse, you know, so that presents perhaps some technical problems in figuring out, you know, the, the level of support if that, if that is a factor. You know, I, I am in, have two minds about physical infrastructure. One, I would be liberal to some degree when, when it was, when it was warranted that some, when, when we got to the point where we said, you know, however we do it, some, something is necessary on the street, I think the, the speed signs with feedback, you know, I have a, I have a pretty heavy foot and, and I'm, I'm less careful when I'm outside of Agghead than I am when I'm in Agghead. And, but when I'm coming through Duck and that sign starts flashing at me, I slow down. And, and I think, I think to some degree that would apply to most folks, that, you know, if you see that you're, you know, you're, you're getting that feedback, I think, I think that will help. And I would tend to be more liberal with things like signs than I would with, with speed cushions. And I would tend to be more liberal with things like signs than I would with, with speed cushions and that sort of thing, you know, because that's a really significant piece of, 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 of infrastructure. And although, on the other hand, one of the things I do wish we would find a place to try, in my daughter's neighborhood in Durham, and this is a fairly dense old neighborhood, you know, really old neighborhood. They have the smallest traffic circles I've ever seen anywhere. The planter in the middle of the intersection is about the size of a tractor trailer tire. You know, they are not big. Usually have a small tree in the middle of them and just a standard, you know, pavement lane around them. I mean, it's sort of like, it's not really a circle, it's really a fat, slightly fat intersection. And they're very effective, you know, certainly something like that's very effective. It's also more decorative than a speed cushion. And, and as long as a fire truck could get around it, a public safety vehicle could get around it, a trash truck could get around it, I wish we'd find a place to try. All we need is a tractor tire, some mulch, and a potted tree, you know, and just, just see what the response would be.
And, and to that point, we've got limitations on a lot of our, spatially, within our right-of-ways that we have here in the town. And I think the largest right-of-way width that we have is about 60 feet.
Right.
That makes it really difficult to be able to upfit something like that. But I do agree, you can look at something that's functional as well as aesthetically pleasing.
Yes.
And, and I think we've always, we've tried to do that with other areas of the town. So I think that's something, if, if it does present itself, that we would like to explore.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
For, for your feedback. That brings us to an update on the 2024 Town Fireworks Display. Who is this? Oh, Deputy.
Good morning, everyone. How are y'all? We are, of course, getting ready for our annual July 4th fireworks event. Still using Zambelli, of course, who's, and I believe puts us on a great show. Communicate real well with us. We've been in communications with them for several months now as we plan for this. Town Departments of Public Services and Police and Fire have worked together to get our plan together. Pretty much everything is in place already. So as always, we will be at the Aghead Pier on July 4th. The fireworks show will start at about 9:25 PM. We can expect it to last around 20 minutes. Extremely good show is usually put on by Zambelli. Very professional crew. They have been around a long time, and we're, we're glad to have them, glad to, to continue to work with them. So hopefully, everyone will be able to be there and be able to attend. And we'll just keep moving ahead with our planning process and look forward to a great evening. If we should have a weather event that prevents them from happening on the 4th, the rain date is, of course, July 5th at the same time. So I've been in discussions with Andy at the Pier, and of course, his manager now, Brian, who's still there. Everything is set for the Pier, so hopefully, we look forward to a good show.
Good.
Any questions from you all?
Appreciate that. Any questions? Excited, looking, looking forward to it, as always, always a great show. Turns out, thanks to Ms. Dahl Gray. Appreciate that. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. And it is both correct in rotation, and because I know there's something to be said, I'll start with Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you. As you know, I'm on the 50th Anniversary Committee for Jockeys Ridge. And they have asked me to come forward and present you for consideration of a donation. We've already heard from Ann Cavill-Bom and former Mayor Mueller as to what a special place Jockeys Ridge is to the town and to everybody that visits it. And you have in your packet the request for a donation and for a budget amendment, should we decide to approve the donation, is already in there. If you have any questions for me or the manager, I'd be happy to answer them, but...
Right, and this is the amount, in the amount of $15,000.
Correct.
$15,000.
The budget amendment is for less than that, but the request is for $15,000. So it asks the Board to approve the request of $15,000 and also the budget amendment, and we'll pull the money.
Okay. All right. I think it's, it's relevant to note that the town does have a long history of supporting Jockeys Ridge and its events there, going back to the beginning. And we do have documented occasions when the town has made contributions for, for events at Jockeys Ridge. So perhaps a motion would be in order.
I think we can motion that we approve the donation of $15,000 to Jockeys Ridge State Park for their 50th anniversary celebration.
Second?
And the budget amendment.
And the budget amendment.
And the budget amendment? All right, very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, sir.
We could have a meeting this afternoon. They'll be very happy to hear that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Sanders?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley.
In the spirit of time, I will kind of go through this as quickly as possible. I think the Board members got an email from Andy last night. I was contacted by a resident of Soundside Road. When the new sign went up at the entrance to Jockeys Ridge, Soundside Access, they made note that the town name and seal was removed, and just wondered where we were with the MOU. So reaching out to Andy, nothing, not on Andy's behalf, but nothing has been done at the local level. It's just kind of been drug along a little bit would, would be a way to describe it. So I think reaching out to somebody at the state level may be appropriate. And I think that the people at Soundside Road, or at least the person I'm speaking to, that's speaking on behalf of some people, just don't want the town to abandon them and just say, "Not our, you know, not our problem anymore." So I think they would like, and what would ideally be good for the town is if they had alternate access to the Soundside Access. There's nothing we can do about that other than to at least ask. So I guess what I'm asking for now is to see if it's okay if the manager contacts Director of State Parks, Brian Strong, to try to get, gauge his position, since luckily we're not, not getting much feedback. And that may be because the state's not going to do it, but at least we can ask.
Yes, I think that's right.
Commissioners?
I'm okay with it. I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
Thank you all.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I think that, that is appropriate. It's time to, to elevate that and see if there's any headway to be made. If there's none, you know, we'll consider perhaps other courses. But we, we need to know what parks is, where they stand.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sears? Uh, excuse me. Commissioner Brinkley, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Sears.
Nothing.
All right, Commissioner Labor.
Nothing. I did want to say thank you to our fire, our town staff, and our police. There was a huge accident, everyone knows that. And I was going back and forth in the traffic between my shops, and I just couldn't believe how smoothly you guys kept everything under control with that long of a time. And I was very impressed, and just thank you for all your work.
I'll, I'll echo that, if I may. I think that, you know, that was a, that was an awful accident. It, it generated, you know, a lot of concern on social media, you know, reporting, that sort of thing. By all accounts, our staff handled it in an exemplary manner and coordinated with the other agencies. And I think, I think did, did some of their best work in that, in those circumstances. And we do appreciate that very much. So thank you, Commissioner, for, for, for bringing that up. I have nothing else on my agenda, so I believe that brings us to closed sessions. I will ask before we do that, is there other business to come before the Board? In which case, we will, we will be ready to adjourn to the, to the ribbon cutting when we complete our closed session. So I move that we enter closed session to consider a personnel issue pursuant to GS 143-318.11A6 and for, to discuss the possible acquisition of real property located at 4222 South Corotan Highway pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter closed session for the stated purposes. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The Board will be in closed session. Board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you please report?
Yes, sir. The Board did discuss one or more confidential personnel matters. Also discussed the potential acquisition of real property. But, and some actions were taken, but nothing needs to be disclosed at this time.
All right. Very good. We resolved that there was no other motion to come, business to come before the Board. So we will recess, and, and we have, we have determined that we need to recess to the ribbon cutting at, at Public Services at 12:30. So I make that in the form of a motion. Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Board is in recess.